Rachel Wilson, I think was her name?
All right, we're going to go ahead and begin tonight's study session. We have one item on the agenda and it's discussion regarding medical marijuana processor zoning and licensing and update on medical marijuana disposal and consumption. Ms. Mukala?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am here to discuss a council inquiry regarding potential sub-tier categorization of medical marijuana processors. Specifically, a few months back, the question was posed, can we examine permitted uses for certain types of processors within commercial areas? And I wanted to start out by kind of a reminder of where our zoning currently is. Right now, medical marijuana processors are permitted uses in I-1, I-2, and M-1. And they have the ability to seek a special use in C-1, C-2, C-3, and MUD mixed-use development. And so, the question is, are there any types of processing that we can move as permitted uses into commercial areas instead of requiring them to come forward for the special use? And so, this topic came before the Community Planning and Transportation Committee on September 26th of this year. And this general structure was presented then. It has been tweaked a little bit since then based on new information I've learned, new terminology. But these tiers were part of that presentation. And so, I've just set them out for you. The first sub-tier that we could consider creating is a pre-roll facility. It would be a business that is licensed as a dispensary at the state level, licensed as a processor at the state level, and wishes to do both in a commercial area. And the processing would be limited to the creation of joints, pre-rolls, whatever you call them. And it usually involves grinding, so I've included that language. And that's the definition there. That's Tier 1. Tier 2 includes Tier 1, and then it goes a step further and says it could also include, basically, the infusion of products with medical marijuana concentrate. And I'll get to the definition of marijuana concentrate. That is being created as a part of this sub-tier categorization as well. And then Tier 3 is what we now know as our typical medical marijuana processor that encompasses all of the above. The difference between Tier 3 and the other two tiers, though, is that because it is the typical industrial process, it doesn't anticipate a shop front. It's still in industrial areas. Tier 1 and Tier 2, the idea is to allow dispensaries that want to go that extra step to have their shop front and to do some processing as well. So, they require shop fronts. So, at the CPT meeting in September, there was some mention about, hey, this is going to make it potentially confusing for applicants. Let's give them a little guidance to make sure that they know what their responsibilities are. And so, the definitions that you see in your packet, and I didn't restate them here, but at the end of those tiers, I've tagged on some language that makes it clear, hey, by the way, we're not changing anything on the state level. Your licenses are the same, and this doesn't affect that. And heads up, in Tier 1 and Tier 2, you may need to get more than one license at the state level. So, that language is just thrown in there as part of the definition to be sure that everyone's on the same page.
If we decide to pass this ordinance in our customer service friendly permitting and licensing, are we going to have some sort of special handout? Because if I understood it correctly, we're the only ones in the state that are doing this kind of tiered thing, just to make sure we're very transparent and able to help people through the process.
That was one comment that is addressed in this draft, which is, if we have one business located in one location doing both dispensing and processing, then should they be paying a duplicative, or what was thought to be a duplicative license fee? And so, this draft does take that into account.
Not just about the fee, just help people navigate, here's what it is at the state, and we're different in Norman.
We'll do that. I mean, we already have a step-by-step how you get through the COC process, so we will add, we'll just update our literature.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilwoman Bierman?
Before we bring this, move this forward, or as we move it forward, can we include a copy of that so we can see, and the public can see, how it would be presented to people? Just included in the documentation for whatever the next step is? Yeah. Just so that people know that, yes, we're adding, we're adding some tiers, but this is how it's presented to applicants, so it is fairly clear.
Color-coded zoning map type approach.
I will say, Tulsa did implement initially a tier structure because they were looking at processors only being allowed in their heavy industrial district. And they had someone object to that at their meeting, and so, they came back with a compromised tier system that allowed certain types of processing to locate in a lighter industrial area. No one, besides that, in Oklahoma, has any type of tiering that I'm aware of. And no one that I can find yet has tiered processors and specifically allowed extraction in commercial. And I'll get into that in more detail, but I've tried to do my best to try to locate places that may have encountered this before.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Do you have any indication as to why nobody else has done it in a tiered capacity? Like, is there some problem we're not seeing that they feel like might arise?
It is a question that's been asked. In one case, and I spoke to an attorney in the Boulder area, who said that the question was asked early on, but their council simply wasn't interested. It just didn't go anywhere. Otherwise, it appears that the question simply hasn't been asked. That's a bit of speculation on my part, but when this has been raised...
Trailblazers.
For permitted, for allowing them as, allowing any type of processor as permitted in a commercial area.
Everyone's just going special use then?
They've placed them in industrial areas, and some have created special use, as we did from the outset. And so, here's the definition of medical marijuana concentrate, which really relates to that Tier 2 definition. I've tried to be inclusive. I've gotten lots of feedback from different people who have been looking at this a lot. I think this is fairly comprehensive and should be accurate scientifically.
Pull and snap, sounds like it's from the legal law.
So, here is a breakdown of the proposed treatment, because it does affect licensing, as I mentioned before. So, the Tier 1 and 2 fees, their fee would be set the same as dispensary, and there would be no duplication where they've already paid their dispensary license fee. So, I believe that's $600, initial, 450 renewal, so that's what would apply there, and they wouldn't pay it twice. For zoning, the way that that draft you have is set up, Tier 1 and Tier 2 would be permitted uses in all of the C categories. And by the way, that means that there are permitted use within Center City, because those are adopted into Center City. You'll see a chart to that effect coming up. Tier 3, based on those definitions, and in this draft so far, would stay the same. They would stay in industrial and M-1. And again, it would specify no onsite sales. You may remember way back when our very first marijuana ordinance came through, that there was a specification that we wanted to allow shop fronts or dispensaries in industrial areas as a special use. So, that's already in our code, actually. So, this is in keeping with that. If we have a Tier 3 processor, they really aren't expected to have a shop front. Okay, and so, the further question that staff has been looking into, volatile, or extraction generally, and of course, that breaks down, right now as we know it, into volatile versus non-volatile. Are we using volatile substances, or is it a more straightforward process? I have found guidance. Again, there was some limited sub-tiering by Tulsa. I found some in Colorado. And since my, our meeting in September with CPTC, I've been provided some information from Los Angeles County that also breaks it down and provided some really good terminology for distinguishing the process as we know it now. Unfortunately, and again, I still didn't find a good example of a municipality who has approached this very issue of, okay, now that we've broken it down, which ones are we putting in commercial areas? Again, processors, and in a lot of states, processors are called manufacturers. They're treated as manufacturers, industrial uses, and there seems to have been limited comment in the people I've talked to from Colorado in particular, when they've been told to set up a wholesale operation in industrial. That's just been the way it's proceeded in those states so far. Now, in the memo, you'll notice I went into a little bit more detail about different jurisdictions. I talked about Los Angeles. They have a very detailed and regimented categorization system for their zoning ordinance. They very clearly set up categories instead of lists where uses can be fit into, instead of finding the magic one that fits the right box. Denver is a good example of open zoning. They say, they're allowed everywhere except that they have to be set back 500 feet from residential, or except that this type of process requires that. So, they essentially allow it all up front, and then call it back little by little. And again, that's how their code is set up to approach it for every industry, not just marijuana. That's just how their zoning is set up. So, ours doesn't look like either one of those examples is the issue that I'm coming into. We have set out specific lists. We do have some definitions. We do have some categories. But by rule, we really do list our uses pretty definitely. And in listing them the way that we've had, we have created our own categorization of manufacturing that fits in industrial areas versus manufacturing that fits in commercial areas. Good example, and this is what we talked about at CPTC, bakeries. There's some level of manufacturing obviously happening, but they're locating in commercial areas, restaurants in commercial areas. They're making something out of ingredients that are onsite. But then you have your hostess factory. It's a clearly distinguishable in our head commercial, or industrial distinction, but we haven't set out a specific definition in our zoning ordinance that defines it. So, because we haven't done that, we don't have a definition that we can apply to the marijuana industry, to really any industry. It's not just marijuana. It's, we haven't set forth a specific definition for that manufacturing line. Instead, we've demonstrated it through the uses that we've listed, and through the application of our zoning ordinance historically. And so, city staff's discussions has been mainly about, okay, so what other distinctions can we think of? Breweries really are the best example we've been able to think of that we've approached recently. And so, what happened with breweries because of the particular, you know, the type of industry it is, the market demand. They want shop fronts, but they want to do some stuff onsite. So, we permitted those as special uses. Now, they're only permitted in C-3 as a special use, whereas marijuana processors are in all three so far. But still, it's a very similar situation. So, so far, it seems that we've kind of treated everyone pretty much the same, at least in recent years, with how this has been approached. So, if we were to create a permitted use on an extraction level, the challenges I see are, how do we define what type of extraction crosses that line into industrial manufacturing? The first issue I come to is an evolving industry. It's changing every day, and I have had discussions with people in the industry about, okay, I understand that CO2 and butane are the most common volatile substances, but are we sure that no one's experimenting with anyone, anything else? If we define it based on this, are we leaving ourselves open for anything else? And people really, they're being pretty honest, they just can't answer these questions yet. So, that's my first challenge, is finding that line even if we did it. And the second challenge is, it's really not the structure of our zoning ordinance. If we are to take this type of tactic for marijuana and create the specific subcategory, it could create a lot of uncertainty as to other industries and where that line is drawn. We change one big part of the code for this, how will that ripple effect go beyond the code? So, I see it as, if we're going to cross that line into trying to more definitely define, you know, commercial manufacturing versus industrial, it might be better as a wholesale zoning question as opposed to just the marijuana industry itself. So, those are the challenges that I'm seeing with this process. So, at this time, unfortunately, we still don't have a recommendation for, if we are to draw that line in extraction, where it is, and how we would recommend doing it in order to place some in commercial.
Councilwoman Bierman?
Do you think that the way we have been approaching it so far with our spuds to require, you know, if someone is doing non-extraction processing and they would like to locate in a particular area? I'm thinking of the one just from last week. It was cold, I think it was just cold water extraction. Do you think that that is a way to kind of address it while the industry is still changing? That it limits them to that, only that kind of extraction? And if they do want to change and do something different, then they need to come back?
Yes, I do think our approach so far has been very compatible with an evolving industry like the medical marijuana industry. And I've seen it not only in spud and pud, but also special uses. We have seen a lot of those come forward. Both of those mechanisms allow us to look at the specific project instead of trying to shape that category quite yet without the information we need to do it. So, as far as spud, of course, yes, we have people that come in and say, this is exactly what I'll be doing. Or instead, they might specify, well, I'll be extracting, but don't tie themselves into a particular type. So, yes, the way we've been doing it so far allows for it. And of course, as I mentioned, we have special use, sorry, we do have special use allowances in all of the C areas so far for processor.
The reason why I ask the question is because I am a little bit worried about someone trying to get a foot in the door by not wanting to list the extractions that they're using. You know, it's really easy to say, well, I'm just going to be doing cold water extraction, so that's why I said extraction in the application. But then, three months from then, you know, they locate in some, you know, incredibly dense commercial area, and then all of a sudden, there's new technology, and now they're using some high-grade industrial flammable chemical that I can't even pull a name out of, because I'm no chemist. But that's my concern, and so, I would, I don't know if there's, it's just something that we need to kind of verbally agree as a council, that if we're not going to have something specific, that we're going to try and be specific in these applications so that this doesn't happen? Because I also see a lot of conflict with area businesses or area neighborhoods. If someone says they're only going to do this, but they're not held to that, and then they turn around and a week later, you know, they're carting in major equipment, so...
This could also be why they need to annual permit, and someone comes in specs. That may be how we...
But the pud, they can't, it's not like we take back their pud.
And this was discussed at a recent meeting, I think, in the context of the special use we were examining in RE areas, where, you know, that special use broad language was passed at a time when special uses were evaluated on a year-by-year basis. I will remind everyone, we have the COC process in place now, and that does require annual inspection. So, there is kind of an ability for us to keep up with an evolving business as they add processes.
Even with special uses? We have the COC?
Well, if it's not allowed within their pud, and if it's not, if it's special-conditioned out of their special use, then we would be alerted to the zoning violation at that time, and it would be approached as a zoning violation. It wouldn't be through the COC process, but I guess what I'm saying is, the COC process guarantees that they will be coming back to us to explain and let us evaluate their procedures onsite every year, at least as the law is now.
But that doesn't help us with the pud?
We would still have to enforce it if they are acting outside of it. And you're right, if they contain very specific language in their spud or pud, you know, from a city standpoint, that's good, because it allows us to know.
That's what I want us to get to. And that's my worry, is that if the language is too broad and just says extraction, that it's, it's a wedge in to be able to say, okay, well, I need another permit, or another license, but my pud allows me to do this.
Right.
So, that's my, that's my worry. I know there are multiple layers. I just want to make sure that we're catching that at every layer, and not missing one or two that makes it way more complicated.
It would, it's going to be a delicate balance, trying to make sure that we're understanding exactly what they're asking for, at the same time that they are understanding, they being the applicant, what they are asking for as well, so that we can all be on the same page. A lot of those conversations are happening upfront, and I think so far, the applications that have come through have been pretty straightforward. I will say that some of the four amendments that were made specifying non-extraction processing in the last, that's a very clear line, I think, industry-wise at this point, that we can all say that we're on the same page with. So, if we can just continue to develop those distinctions, then maybe we can get to a point where subcategories are easier to identify.
Councilwoman Hall, is your hand up?
Yes, it's a follow-up to, I think I understand this, spud and the pud, the special use. It was a question I actually asked on Tuesday, because that application was a special use and not a pud, I think. And it was very specific about just limiting to, I think, just rolling. And I was trying to figure out what the actual, you know, follow-up or inspection is to that specific language, how do we follow up with that? And that was with a special use, I think. So, that was because we didn't have this yet.
And so, just like what you're seeing procedurally, when a spud or a pud comes in as an application, you're going to see an ordinance that referenced the adoption of the pud or the spud as the zoning for that parcel. And then it's going to have a pud narrative attached to it, and that's going to set out the controlling language. With a special use, the controlling language will be within the actual ordinance itself. It will list it as a restriction, and we've been paying close attention to those as they come through, to make sure that they're matching the language and the descriptions you're getting.
Okay.
Councilwoman Bierman?
Just so I understand, if we had already had this, and this was already passed, she wouldn't have needed a special use permit, correct? It would have just been a license?
Pure non-extraction processing.
This was just rolling, you know, from Tuesday. So, in that case, she wouldn't even have needed a special use if we had had this in place, because she would have just been able to apply for her license, which would have been a permitted use in the building she was looking to occupy.
Which, that's my next question, sorry, Councilwoman Petron. How does that, how does, if we follow your recommendations and clean it up, which I think we all want to do, how does that impact what we've already put through with special use?
If we, I want to make sure I understand the question.
So, we've had, we've had two, at least two, come through, where you all have done an excellent job of making them spell out what they're going to do to try and limit uncharted territory and uses we, again, can't even foresee in the future. But two, specifically, rolling marijuana cigarettes, joints, or blunts, oh, I never thought I'd say that, or spraying on baked goods. And so, that's what's written into the spud or pud. And how does, if we do this kind of retro, does it change anything?
For applicants that have already received a special use, let's say theoretically, we have someone that received a special use more restrictive than the permitted use that we would implement, they would still be subject to the underlying categorical zoning. So, they would have the benefit of the amendment. I believe their special use would stay in place. They might not need to rely upon it going forward, but they would still have it. And I don't, it would not limit them if we passed a permitted use larger.
Okay, so they would have to come back through any sort of process or anything?
No, it would not prompt a redo.
Okay. Councilwoman Petron?
Okay, so, now that we understand that the medical authority of Oklahoma Medical Department, whatever it's called, does believe that rolling pre-rolls is processing, what have we done to notify all of our dispensaries that we need them to come back and get in compliance?
I don't think there, I don't know that we have actually taken in any information from applicants specifying that they would be pre-rolling. So, I don't know that we have a list of the people we would need to notify. So, what you're asking might be better for some type of public information release or announcement if we have...
Okay, so, probably Stephen can speak to this better than I can, but my understanding is that they assumed that they didn't need a processing license, and I just don't want our retailers to get into any trouble. So, I would like, if we could, to send a letter out to all of our dispensaries, letting them know that we've gotten this opinion, and we need you to come in and fill out this paperwork. Not that we want to charge them any money, but we want to protect you as our retailer.
Chances are, if they're falling in that category, they're going to have to have a state license before we can give them a city license. The state will require them to have a license if they're rolling, and they currently do not. So, we could send out a letter notifying all of our dispensaries that, hey, we've had this ruling, and if you're doing that, you'll need to file for processor license through the OMMAs, as well as the city of Norman, and they would have to go through that whole process. They will pay twice up there.
But not here.
That's business-friendly. I mean, to protect them as best as we can.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of most dispensaries not knowing that making pre-rolls is considered processing. They probably don't know that they need to go get a processing license from the state as well. And so, some of them might not know until a state inspector comes around at some point in the year. Anything we can do to let them know ahead of time that they need to take proper steps to remedy that.
It's not like we don't have a list.
Either stop doing it, either stop making pre-rolls onsite, or...
Or come see us.
We don't have addresses for the others.
Yeah.
Follow-up, just to your question, Councilmember Petron, would the timing of this be following the passage of these tiers? Uh, kind of a notification of, we have instituted permitted uses, but this is what might be happening on the state level?
So that way, we don't do it twice?
That, that's kind of what I'm wondering. That would be following a passage.
Councilwoman Holman?
So I do have some concerns similar to Beth, uh, ones that Beth has expressed about just overall zoning, um, and going forward with these changes and how that might impact other areas. And that you don't have a recommendation yet for what we should do necessarily. Um, I have some concern about that, but I do also have some concern about our current process because it does seem like we're having multiple, uh, requests. And at least the last two or three meetings consecutively, there's been a proposal for one of these somewhere. So I have some concern about council agendas having this on the agenda repeatedly. I mean, maybe it wouldn't be for very long, maybe a few months, but it could be, who knows. I have some concern about keeping it the way we are and that eating up council agenda time. Um, and then also the concerns that you've expressed about nobody else anywhere in the whole country apparently is doing this, even in states where they've been dealing with this for years. Um, so that does give me some concern about going forward with it, uh, from this point, anyway.
And just an observation, based on your first comment, I, I do think, and I might rely on you, Jane, for a confirmation, that a majority of at least the special uses we've seen would have been addressed by tier one, tier two. And so those should be addressed by that. Of course, any extraction processing would still be coming forward as a special use or within a, a PUD or spud.
Okay. So I want the council to, my reason for wanting to go forward with this is I don't want the council to get to this position where this is on the agenda every meeting, and the council's having to approve it. And then, first time the council doesn't approve it, then what happens? And so on and on. So, and yeah, specifying what people are doing and how do we keep on, how do we make sure we're on top of it?
Councilmember Bearman?
So I, um, I think I agree about the extraction. I, I would love to see some kind of distinction, but I do think it would be really, really difficult right now. And if kind of the way we're going with it is working, I think that that is fine. I do feel a little more strongly about the separating out of the pre-rolls and the baking or whatever you want to call it, um, kind of for two reasons. One is I feel a little bit like this could reduce regulation-driven cost increases, both for the businesses and for patients. If you can't do this in-house, you are going to be paying to buy it from someone else, and you are paying for all the time and effort it takes them to do it. And no business is just going to eat that cost. They're going to pass that down to their customer, their patients, which means cost increases for them. Um, and I think it also, I, I don't think that it's a problem that we're the first ones to look at this. I think that this shows a recognition that this is a really complex issue, and across-the-board solutions definitely will have an impact. So by finding the ways that we can navigate a balance that works for us and reduces the administrative burden for us, but also provide some clarity and paths forward for people who want to do both without drastically increasing their administrative costs, I think that it's worth doing. Um, but I agree that the extraction seems to be wading far deeper into waters that we might not be ready for. But I do think, I think, I, I think that I, I feel like this could be a good, viable path forward. I really do see some potential cost increases if we don't. And that would have a, that would have an impact widely. So I, I would like to see us move forward with this, but I, I think that leaving off any kind of separation of extractions is probably appropriate right now.
Councilwoman Petron?
So for me, it's not a matter of it being cannabis. I don't really care what it is. For, I would like, I think that right now, we already have non-cannabis, um, companies that, um, they have dangerous things that, when you walk in, you're inhaling. And so I'm not worried about cannabis smoke or anything like that. But if there's chemicals in the store that are being used, and, you know, much like T-shirt shops, you smell it, when you walk in, you've already breathed it in. And so for some people, that is, for everyone, everyone's sensitive to it. It's just how sensitive are you? And I know that there are other states who do look at this stuff much closer. So, um, I would be interested in finding out, um, how other states, whether it's, it doesn't matter what they're selling inside the store, it's, um, how they got there, you know? The, the ultimate T-shirt isn't the problem. It's how you got the dye on there and the ink on there. Um, I would be appreciative to look into how we can, for a public health and environmental, um, reasons, uh, to be able to make that distinction. So this just happens to be extraction, but I think it should be, um, something that we're looking at across the board for public health reasons.
So this is, um, this is a chart. You've seen it before. This is how it looks right now, based on all of the ordinances and amendments that have passed regarding medical marijuana so far. Here is where those tiers would fit in. As drafted so far. And so, um, it was at the September 26th, CPTC, um, that we were asked to come to full counsel and get feedback. And so moving forward, um, the question is, do we want to go back to CPTC for evaluation of a complete draft? Do we have tweaks to the one that I've presented you with? Or, or where do you see us going from here? I wanted to invite feedback on that direction.
Councilmember Holman?
Um, well, I'd be okay with it going back to review a draft, like a final draft ordinance, and see if we identify any changes, and then, uh, send it back up. I'd be okay with that in, uh, January CPT, I believe. Yeah. It's a long time, though. It's a long time away.
I know.
So it means we won't be looking to, at like, uh, approval by council till, what, March or April?
But what we have in place seems to be working, for the most part. It's not like there's no moving forward while we're making sure we get it right.
That's true. There's no real hurry, I don't think, I guess.
Councilmember Bearman?
Do, what, when will O M M A be going, is it starting in January, going back around to everyone who got a license and doing their COC?
They're doing it now.
They're doing it now?
Most of the people that were licensed were licensed in July and August of last year, and about the time that, that COC process went into play, they were already starting to their renewal processes because they were told that it would take a couple of months, possibly. And so, we were signing off on those the very first week, um, for people's licenses that were expiring in September. So they're already doing that, and we're educating them when they come in to us.
Because my concern is that if they get kind of deep into this process and start alerting these dispensaries that they're going to need the additional licenses, that that's going to kind of cause a flood in to do renewals or questions about processing licenses. And I would really love to have these options in place for them at that time. So I was just curious kind of when they're, when O M M A is starting that process. But it, so it looks like they're starting it now.
They started at last, well, when you say O M M A starts the process.
When they do their license renewal?
Yeah, they've been doing it since August.
Okay.
Because most of the licenses either expired in August or September.
Oh, expired. I thought you were saying that they were being granted in July or August. I'm like, how are they doing renewals already?
They were doing, they're filing for their renewals now. So we've issued, um, we've had many, many, many COCs come through already, um, that we've signed as staff. Um, so that is happening now. And when they come in for us, because they already, some don't even have a city license, so that's the first thing they find out, you have to have one. But they're also being educated on, um, that they won't have to renew their city license until March. And, um, so we can also do the education on the, the pre-rolls and all that, once the ordinance is in place.
Okay, so we do our renewals in March?
Every license a city issues expires March 31st.
Okay, then I would really love to have that be our deadline to getting this done. That way, we could just do, you know, that way, when everyone's doing their renewals, they can get their tier one or tier two processor license at the same time. I don't know with that, I mean, I, I think we could probably make it a game time decision at CPTC. If it looks good, we could just move it to planning. But if not, I'm fine with it coming back. I just don't want to.
Yeah.
Do you want to add it to your 13th agenda, Stephen?
Um, maybe.
We have three things on there, but.
March 13th, and then the second meeting, oh, December?
December 13th. You have three subjects, um, the transit update, the postal, the throttle crossing, and, uh.
Forgot the other one.
We're all Sean.
It's going to be the Sean Show that day.
Yeah, just paid the striping and, uh, stop signs in rural areas.
Stop signs in rural areas. I don't know anyone who wants that.
But a final review of the draft ordinance may not take very long.
So if they do January, does that affect February date?
What's the deadline for the February medication?
Pop quiz, Jane.
Probably early, first of January.
Okay, so it really does still need to be December.
What's it, what's that?
For the rural planning commission, it would be the first of January, first of the month.
Well, I guess we could, if it's ready, if it can be ready by next Thursday, I guess we can go ahead and take a look.
Yeah.
I, I do feel that it's in, in pretty good shape. If anyone has feedback between now and then, um, what you see, though, has been massaged since the first time CPTC saw it. Um, so I do think it's possible.
Councilmember Hall?
I just have a zoning clarification question to make sure I understand the implications for Center City Form Based Code. So if the tier one and tier two is allowed, is it anywhere in Center City, or is it matched up with the regulating plan for mixed use? Or how, how's that work?
I wish I'd brought that zoning table. Um, it is in the use table within the Center City code, and it's all commercial uses.
Oh, okay.
So tier two would be a permitted use?
Right. But it wouldn't be in, just anywhere within Center City. It would be in the, uh.
I see what you're saying.
The orange and the red, basically.
The B F S is that allowed, though?
Right, we would have to have the orange and the red typically. I mean, I need to verify that, but I believe typically it would be the orange and the red.
Because otherwise, it would be, of all of these uses, this could potentially be a place where you're allowing in residential in certain parts of Center City. So, just making sure I understand that.
I can't believe that to be, I, I believe it's the orange and the red.
Okay.
Okay. We'll confirm it for absolute sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or guidance needed?
On that subject, um, no, but there's the two other, very short items. I had memos in your packet about it. I, I don't have a presentation because it really was, here's this new information, and can you give me direction on, on what you'd like us to do with it? The first is, um, well, let's start with public consumption. So, consumption is, uh, as, it's in a lot more detail in the memo, but essentially, it's allowed in public areas that are not enclosed. And so in public, certain public areas, under a state statute, they're not allowed. We're responsible to put up signage. And, um, we have, in our code, public parks don't allow tobacco smoking. It specifies tobacco. It's listed within our tobacco code. Now, all of the state laws were updated to apply to smoking and vaping and tobacco and marijuana products, all, all at the same time. So the question is, did we want to make our code regarding public parks consistent with that use on the state level?
Yes. Councilmember Holman?
Um, I would say, I, I would say the consumption of cannabis should not be illegal in a city park. The smoking of it maybe perhaps should be restricted. But if someone wants to eat their edible on the park bench, then I think that we shouldn't give them a ticket for that.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Unless the state losses.
I think, I agree with Stephen on this, uh, Councilmember Holman. Um, but I, I wouldn't, I guess I would, the verbiage might be, if your product impedes somebody else's airspace. I mean, you know, like, I don't, if I'm walking by, I don't want to inhale your vape or whatever. But I don't want to inhale any vape or any smoke of any kind. So I think that that seems like a, yeah, I don't care if you eat a gummy and stare at the tree for five hours.
I would guess I would say the consumption of tobacco is not illegal in the city park, is it?
No, just the smoking.
Smoking. So, I mean, I would, I would say that just apply that.
Drink a beer in a city park?
In Reeves Park.
Which park?
Which park? I was like, oh.
Any park.
Harley Legacy.
And, uh, Westwood Golf Course, you can smoke cigars.
I know what, I know what happens, but what's legal?
Right, well, you know, state law on that changed as well. So it was consumption of low-point beer. Now it's consumption of beer and wine, uh, is allowed.
Is that what we do, too?
Uh, except for where we prohibited by ordinance, and that was already in place.
I think he said Westwood Park and.
Westwood Park prohibited?
All parks are prohibited, with the exception of Westwood and Legacy. Legacy Park was added to that exemption because of the events that, there was always envisions to be held out there and concerts and things like that. But those are the only two parks you can have alcohol in.
So we can't drink beer at softball games in Reeves Park for the last 30 years?
Oh, okay.
Worst kept secret, Holman.
Good to know, good to know.
I did use the word consumption very broadly, but it is right to be more specific about smoking and vaping. And I should specify, this is in the memo, but it, it's technical on, on the state level, they specified smoking and vaping in nearly every area. But the statute that enables a public entity to designate an area as entirely non-smoking says exactly that. It says entirely non-smoking. Uh, because these laws are so recent and they went through so quickly, there's a lot of question about whether that was purposeful. But from a construction standpoint, including it in one place and not another, that does speak volumes. So at this point, I think the question, uh, for us is, do we want to extend the smoking prohibition to include marijuana? I, I, I don't know that we have direct guidance on whether we should extend it to vaping yet, for the park ordinance, that, that part of it.
I would go ahead and extend it to vaping. I would like to tackle vaping as a council, uh, moving up forward in 2020. So I fully support that. I'd love to hear from my colleagues on that. And I understand that it's medical marijuana, but as Councilmember Holman and Councilwoman Wilson have pointed out, there are other ways to take that medication. And I think smoking, it's a non-starter for me.
I agree.
Councilwoman Bearman?
Because of the state law, we don't run any risk of someone claiming that we are impeding their ability to take their medication as deemed necessary?
Uh, by passing a prohibition on smoking? No, the state statute is, is very clear about entirely non-smoking. Those are the literal words. So that, that's a very.
Just wanted to make sure. Last thing I'd want to do is to have someone, I don't, I don't, I don't know how specific the prescriptions get, but I would hate for someone who is actually given a prescription to say that they can't consume it as they are told they need to or want to.
And so the second subject would be disposal of medical marijuana. And the first of that being that there were disposal facility, there wasn't a category created for that, a licensure state category created for that.
Like, I really feel like there'd be volunteers who could help anyone do that if they so choose.
Free marijuana, given out at Halloween.
That's where it's all going.
Didn't the game change on the first of November with regard to disposal?
In that, uh, more regulations were passed on, it, it did. Um, and that's a good way to put it, because it is very highly regulated by the state. The state will be monitoring the amount disposed versus the amount produced.
Commercial disposal?
Yes, commercial. Yes, commercial disposed, very...
I was, I was like, I really don't want to be telling someone how they need to dispose of their personal marijuana. Okay, commercial.
And that does get into the second subject, but with respect to disposal facilities, we did not include that yet as a licensure or a zoning category for two reasons. First, I have not yet received confirmation that any facilities have been licensed, and the way the state law was passed, they specified that as many as 10 and no more would be licensed in the state of Oklahoma for the first year. So, we really don't know how far-reaching that's going to be. I spoke to someone from the Medical Marijuana Authority about whether or not they would be subject to the COC process, and at that time, they did not know. So, I wanted to float this information out there so that it was on our radar about whether or not, when we learn if they're subject to COC, if there would be an interest in treating them the same as the other licensure categories by creating local license and then zoning use definitions. So, I don't know until I hear back from the OMMA that I need guidance. The second area regarding disposal, though, and this can concern personal marijuana, you're allowed to open burn. Under the state law, you're allowed to open burn root balls, stem leaves, there are certain things. Obviously, it's the part of the plant that has the least trichomes, so there shouldn't be...
With all your knowledge now.
But they, they've chosen these parts specifically for a reason, and so, I looked at our code and what is allowed to be open burned, and there is some language that obviously not anticipating this particular issue is unclear about whether or not it really would extend to allowing open burning of marijuana or prohibit it. So, I, I do recommend that if we know what direction we want to go on that, that we probably consider some clarifying language, either way.
Councilmember Scanlon?
I wouldn't really expose my ignorance, but at your request, I went to the State Compost Conference, right?
Sure.
And, but one of the discussions was the disposable of marijuana byproducts. And they had a panel, an OMMA person was on the panel, and the question came up about city liability, because the city may well, just by virtue of collecting trash, pick up this stuff. And so, the question put to the panelists was, what are potential municipal liabilities? To which we got, we don't know, we'll figure it out.
Awesome.
But there's, I bring it up because there is, depending on what they figure out, and I don't know that it's been figured out, there are potential problems for the city.
Councilmember Beerman?
How do we, or do we license biomedical waste disposal, pharmacy waste disposal?
It could be hazardous household, you know, we're building that facility, would that have its own little...
Like, but I want to know, like, how do the other entities that have potentially sensitive or...
Environmental Services, Deborah Smith, her area monitors most of those places that have that type of thing. They also monitor fatsol and greases that are, you know, that you get rid of at restaurants and places like that. But they have, I can't remember the name of it, but they have a name for those facilities, and they check them annually, I think.
Okay. But do we, so are you asking, are we going to be, do we need to require a license for these facilities, or...
For the commercial facilities, I think it would be helpful to wait and see how the OMMA ends up treating them.
Not the disposal facilities, I meant, like, are we, we're going to be requiring that the dispensaries or processors verify to us where they are disposing, or...
No, I, I think it has more to do with the establishment of the facility located within the city of Norman, running it as a business, complying with building codes as, as the other businesses do. If they are going to be subject to a COC requirement and going through that process, it, it does make sense to loop them in. It's just, I haven't gotten a direct answer on that. And as far as whether or not it, it's good to consider zoning uses in particular for them versus what we already have in place, there are only 10 possible in the first year once licensing begins, from my understanding. So, I'm not sure how much it, it could affect Norman.
Just to wait and see?
I know for vet clinics, we have a hazardous garbage can, and we have a service that comes by and picks it up whenever...
Councilmember Scott?
Do you know of anybody who's buying hemp to make hemp products, like hempcrete or anything like that that we could use? Because it's hemp as a byproduct, and maybe we could just sell them our hemp and stems and whatever.
The Shawnee, Absentee Shawnee Tribe was talking about a big investment in the hemp industry, and I don't know if it's for the CBD extraction value or all of the textiles that go along with it, but it's worth a phone call to see if they, if they plan on processing, what could they receive, and, you know, it would be virtually up the street.
There's a ton of stuff that they can make out of hemp, and so, I think if we're going to waste our weed, we might as well make some money off of it in the process.
Well, and I'm not sure what the state regulations allow as far as these commercial facilities disposal, if they are permitted to outsource it for secondary use of that sort, that they might. I'm not familiar with that, but as Councilmember Scanlon indicated, it was a pretty comprehensive regime that was put in place for, for regulating these, this waste, especially the amount of it. And I hate to speculate, this is, you know, you hear all kinds of rumors about, about new things, but part of it, I understand, was in response to the origination of marijuana from outside of the state. There being, if you're getting product from out of the state, you won't be able to show the requisite amount of resulting waste associated with, with having been grown on site. And so, part of this regulation, that's pretty specific of disposal and how much you're supposed to be able to present to the disposal facility, was to guarantee that Oklahoma marijuana was the marijuana being produced and sold in stores. So, it is, it is pretty comprehensive.
Okay.
So, then, sorry?
Good.
Okay. So, I mean, is it a possibility that we can buy back? Like, we can buy the cannabis byproduct, whatever is left over, the disposal, and then again, maybe sell it to the Absentee Shawnee for whatever use they can make out of it?
And this would be marijuana waste that we're receiving through the, the normal waste pickup that we have in place?
I don't know about that.
Well, because I'm not sure that they would actually be able to dispose of any part of it really through a normal trash pickup.
So, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to separate it. I'm thinking, I guess, of making a different sort of, I mean, it's a whole, it's just...
I would assume it's medical waste disposal that's got to be disposed of, like, medical waste.
That the law was specific, but there were no implementing instructions for OMMA, and so everybody's, we're really not sure what we can do, the law notwithstanding.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't do something like that, why we couldn't, you know, make a, a separate receptacle, and then they dispose of their organic, whatever is left over, and then we, we take it and make money off of it.
The definition of marijuana waste does exempt, again, the root ball, the stem leaves, as certain portions, the parts that are able to be open burned. Those are exempt from the definition. So, those are the parts that I think most likely to pass through our waste system. I can't tell you if those are the parts associated with valuable hemp byproduct. I, I don't know that.
I don't know either, I'm just throwing ideas out there.
Okay.
Can we answer your question about the controlled burning, open burning? Not really, I think we went back, yeah. So, you're asking if we need to exempt or, yeah, exempt marijuana from people's rights to open burn on their own agricultural land?
Well, that, yes, that's definitely one way to say it, because technically, the way our code is set up, there's a prohibition of open burning, except in certain circumstances, and there's a list of exceptions. The one probably most applicable, or that would be looked at most closely in this context, would be the agricultural burn exception. And of course, because it didn't anticipate this, it's not exactly clear. And of course, under our zoning ordinance, we've created separate uses. Agricultural crop growth is not the exact same thing as medical marijuana growth anymore. So, because we've defined it differently, it does make sense to be very clear about whether we intend it to fit within that exception.
Councilmember Beerman?
Would an easy way to address this be to maybe specify that the agriculture, I mean, like, maybe we could specify the type of agricultural product, or even say that it has to be on your, product produced on your own land? Because I see that one of the issues being if there's this exception for being able to burn an agricultural land, you're, trucks full of medical marijuana waste coming from wherever the industrial areas are to go and burn it, as opposed to paying to, that, you could pay someone a lot less to burn on their land than you could maybe to pay a company to come and take it from you. So, I wonder if there's a way to specify that you have to burn what's produced on your own land, only on your land. So, someone who is actually growing corn and needs to burn leftovers, they do that on their own land because that's where it's grown, but can't go carting stuff off to the other side of town, east or west, to find agricultural land to burn on for cheaper than you'd be able to pay a company to come and dispose it?
I do think...
Oh, just a thought.
That the way those exceptions are set out, and I'll, I do not have them memorized, it's very possible it already addresses the fact that what is being burned has to have been grown on the, the land. If it's not already in there, I do think the way it's set up is amenable to adding that kind of language.
Councilmember Wilson?
Are you saying our current burn policy says something about burning only what's grown on your land, or are you saying the state law for marijuana burning?
This would be our own code.
Our own code already says that, or is available for amendment in a way that would say that?
Our own code sets it up as just a blanket prohibition on open burn, and then it lists specific exceptions underneath it, and one of those is for agricultural byproduct. And I believe it's very likely it does specify that it was grown on that, on that parcel that's being burned on. I would have to look to be sure, and I'm sorry, I don't have that.
That's okay, I think that that would be something worth looking, seeing if it's already addressed. And then I would say that, I mean, I'm really not familiar with this part of the marijuana industry, but A, I don't, is there going to be a lot of, is this, I don't know, I'm looking at Stephen. Stephen, is there going to be a lot of, of waste to burn?
I mean, I could see there being waste from processing facilities, or maybe growers, if they have a bad crop or something, but I don't, I would assume whatever way they dispose of that, their other stuff now, I don't know.
Well, and then I also...
I know, I don't think it'll be from dispensaries or from patients, it'll be from manufacturers.
From commercial crop facilities?
Absolutely.
Well...
But I would assume they're probably just throwing it in the dumpster.
Yeah, this is like, would burning it actually be the way they would want to do that?
I'm assuming that facilities currently operating in Norman are putting it in the dumpster.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but how likely is it, I guess my question is, how likely is it we're going to have a problem? Should we wait until there is a problem? Because I just don't think it's going to be that big of a deal, but I may be wrong. And I don't want to do anything that inhibits people in my ward from being able to burn their brush and being questioned about whether or not they grew it on their own land. And then there's the other step of enforceability, like, if they have a license to grow and they're growing, and then they take Joe Blow on, you know, Main Street's stuff, too, and burn them, I don't know how we'd enforce that even, so that's just my two cents.
Councilwoman Petron?
Can we not use the city's compost? We have like a compost facility here.
Your Honor, if I'm not mistaken, that process of composting, it, it neutralizes seeds, so they don't...
Yeah, it does.
So, yeah, it may not, it may neutralize any potential popping up in your garden.
A lot better on the environment.
Little pot plant growing up in there.
So, it sounds like I do have some interest in finding out whether or not that language already does specify, or have parameters that would specify, open burning only products that arise from operations on the land. It sounds like, if that language is already in there as written, then we probably don't need to go any farther.
That's where I'm at with it.
That we're comfortable with that. Am I reading that right?
And, and I would agree with Councilwoman Wilson, unless it, if it says that, and then it becomes a problem, then we can come back and address it, but...
We can encourage them to use...
Forest fires and marijuana.
All right. Do you have what you need from us?
That is it for medical marijuana, yes.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks.
All right, that concludes item number one, and I misspoke earlier, I didn't see the second page. We have executive session. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn out a special session and convene into executive session in order to discuss pending litigation regarding Holcomb versus Hickman and the acquisition of real property located at 36th Avenue Northwest between DeComster Road and Indian Hills Road, and Rock Creek Road between 36th Avenue and Grandview Avenue.
A second.
All right.